Seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's begin with a, seeing everybody present, let's begin with a moment of reflection and respect. Thank you. Item three, confirmation of the agenda. I believe we have an addendum.
That council adopts the agenda for the meeting of September the 20th, 2023, as amended by adding the following item. Item five, point two, point one, delegation from Kelly Ziegler, President and CEO, United Way Elgin Middlesex, and they're delegating regarding the United Way Elgin Middlesex.
Thank you. We're in seconder. Council van Rees and Councilor De Rosier. All those in favor. As Carrie, thank you. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? Item five point one, we are going to have a public meeting under the Planning Act. Do we have a motion?
That council do now commence a public meeting at seven oh one PM to receive input from the public with respect to, and this is a report five point one point two, it's from Stuart Finlater of Finlater and Associates Incorporated, and that is report plan twenty seven twenty three, Elmer Industrial Manufacturing, Aim Park Removal of the Holding H Symbol.
We're in the seconder to move into a public meeting. Moved by Councilor Chapman, seconded by Councilor De Rosier. All those in favor? Very well, we're now in a public meeting. Is Stuart Finlater here? Don't see, thanks. Heather, Heather, if you speak to that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I will speak to this report in Stuart's absence. Stuart sends his regrets. Unfortunately, he had a family matter that came up late this afternoon that he needed to attend to. Stuart Finlater of Finlater and Associates, Inc., Land Use Planning Consulting Services was hired by the town of Elmer to prepare the removal of the holding symbol from a portion of the lands within what is called the Elmer Industrial Manufacturing Park or Aim Park. The lands are currently vacant and are proposed to be developed for future industrial uses as part of the Elmer Industrial Manufacturing Aim Park. The parcel has been divided into a total of thirteen blocks, set aside for future development, subject to, amongst other things, the provision of servicing, including pipe water, sanitary sewers, stormwater, and internal road system. It is Stuart's understanding that the purpose of the removal of the holding symbol is to allow the town of Elmer to recover a portion of the municipal costs related to the completion of the necessary studies. Those studies that have been completed on this project include ecological investigations, stormwater management design, conceptual road layout, geotechnical investigation, property survey, and archaeological assessment. These studies were a part of requirements in the participation of the site readiness program by the Ministry of Economic Development, Job Creation and Trade. This application was submitted to the province by town staff on November 28th, 2022. The province has been, had numerous discussions with town staff on this application, and they have indicated to staff that they require the removal of the holding symbol on a portion of the subject lands in order for the town to receive funding available for the completion of these studies. And I do want to note, if we can just go to the diagram showing the lands, it's just a portion of the lands. So it's the lands outlined in red. So you'll see it's that square parcel which would be located on what would be the north side of White Street, and then the lands that would be located on the south side of White Street, and then north of where our water tower will be, as well as the sewage treatment plant. And I do want to note, however, the, sorry, sewage, not sewage treatment, sorry, stormwater management pond. I do want to note the stormwater management pond, as well as the water tower lands, about the railway lands, and to the south of that is the Willow Run subdivision. In terms of planning policies, under the Planning Act, Planning Act specifically speaks to holding provisions bylaws, and this is what gives the ability for councils to enact a holding provision, as well as removing a holding provision, and that is found in section thirty six of the Planning Act. Says council of a local municipality may in a bylaw passed under section thirty four, use the holding symbol with any use designation. Also as well, a bylaw can also be removed as well. Town of Elmer has filed a notice of intention to remove the holding symbol pursuant to section thirty four, subsection four of the Planning Act. It's important to note that the official plan for the town contains provisions related to the use and removal of a holding symbol, in accordance with section thirty six two of the Planning Act. Stuart noted that the proposed holding symbol removal is in keeping with the holding provision requirements of the Planning Act. In terms of the provincial policy statement, we, I can note that under the provincial policy statement, this is not a matter that is addressed in that as a provincial policy statement contains policies. It is important to note, however, the provincial policy statement speaks to employment areas, as well as providing servicing. And I can also comment as well that the proposed removal of the holding symbol is consistent with the employment policies, as well as the terms of policies of the provincial policy statement. Moving on to the County of Elgin official plan. Again, there is policies within the county's plan. Stuart has reviewed them, and he has been able to determine that the removal of the holding symbol conforms with the policies of the county's plan. Moving on to the town Elmer official plan. Town of Elmer's official plan has a section within the official plan regarding holding bylaws. This is the requirement. Municipalities can't pass holding bylaws unless they have policies in their official plan enacting this. We have the sufficient policies in place. Stuart has provided that review in his report, and he has concluded that the, it is in conformity with the policies of the town's plan. Moving on to the zoning bylaw. The lands are currently zoned heavy industrial holding, M two bracket H dash six, in the town zoning bylaw. Important to note that the lands have been zoned heavy industrial holdings since at least nineteen eighty six. That's as far back as I could find in reviewing all the zoning bylaws that have been passed here in the town. Stuart has noted in his report that the requirements set out by the zoning bylaw would be addressed as proposals for new industrial development are submitted and approved by council, each being subject to site plan control. The holding provision specifically spoke to that before you could develop the lands, you need to enter into a site plan agreement. You need to ensure that the lands are appropriately serviced with water and sanitary, and you need to ensure that there is no conflicts between industrial uses and adjacent residential uses. It's important to note that currently there is no services available in Aim Park. The town is the owner of the lands, and as such, has direct and unilateral control over the development and provision of the services. The town will ensure that the development does not take place until such time as the lands are adequately serviced. The town will also ensure that all industrial development is capable of satisfying minimum setbacks from the proposed residential development to the south as required in the D six compatibility between industrial facility guidelines published by the Ministry of Environment, Conservation, and Parks. I do want to note that Mr. Tom Looby from Performance Realty, Inc., has formally requested that the town provide a letter confirming that any industrial development on the lands be required to meet all MECP setback requirements from their future residential development, abutting these lands. And I do want to note, however, that I have provided such letter to Performance Realty, Inc., advising them that the town will be following these requirements, and I have not heard anything further from them. For the reasons stated in the report, and it is his professional planning opinion, that the proposed removal of the holding symbol as it applies to the M two dash H dash six lands is consistent with the provincial policy statement, conforms to the county official plan, as well as the town of Elmer official plan, and meets the requirements of the town of Elmer zoning bylaw, represents good planning. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Heather. Questions or comments from council? Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, worship, to Heather. One of the reasons we, we put a holding provision on the lands was to give staff the opportunity to logically plan the development in the best interest of the town. Has that criteria been met?
Yes, it has.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well, in order to look at the motion, we have to move out of the public meeting. So there's a motion. Oh, did you have a question? Just not that. Sorry, go ahead.
That council do now close this public meeting at seven ten PM and reconvenes the meeting of council.
We're in seconder. Councilor Rahi, Deputy Mayor Barber. All those in favor. Carrie, we have a motion concerning the public meeting.
That council, the town of Elmer proceeds to remove the holding H symbol from the zoning on the Elmer Industrial Manufacturing Park, as shown on the attached figure one sketch, subject to subsection thirty six of the Planning Act, RSO nineteen ninety, as amended.
We're in seconder. Councilor Loizlatch and Councilor Chapman. Any discussion further? Seeing done, all those in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. A lot of holding that went on there. Next, we have item five point two, which is the Elgin Middlesex United Way presentation from Mark Emanuel and Kelly Ziegler. Welcome, and if you approach the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship and counselors. My name is Kelly Ziegler, and I'm the president of C E and CEO of United Way Elgin Middlesex, and it's long overdue that we come for an update on what's happening with your local United Way and our impact that we're having around the region, and specifically in Elmer and Elgin County. As you probably are aware, about six or seven years ago, we went through a merger. So there was at one point the United Way of Elgin St. Thomas and United Way of London Middlesex, and we went through a merger in 2016. And it's been a really interesting journey for our United Way, and I say our because I came from the United Way London Middlesex at that time. And it's been really eye opening for us going through that merger, because while we always said we were London and Middlesex, I would say we were pretty London centric, and what was happening in the region, there wasn't a lot. There wasn't a lot of impact that we were having. There wasn't a lot of local relationships that we had. And when we merged with Elgin St. Thomas, the full board of directors from Elgin County came into our, and that really helped our newly merged United Way understand more about the issues that rural and smaller communities were facing in a way that we never had before. So often, people worry about, you know, sort of the big guy swallowing up the little guy and losing that impact, and I would say it was actually the inverse effect for us. So the local flavor of the smaller United Way carried forward and helped our United Way expand in new and different ways, which has been really good reporting. And then, of course, the smaller United Way at the time benefited from the larger capacity that a larger organization has. So what does that mean in local terms? So here, in this current year, we'll invest about $600,000 in the local community, in Elgin, St. Thomas, and Elmer. We invest in local, local agencies right here that are housed in Elmer, like Mennonite Community Services, as well as agencies that serve the entire county, like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, YWCA, and others. So we're having a significant impact. We have number of volunteers that are involved in all aspects of our organization, including a familiar face here, Mark Emanuel, who is our first campaign chair that's come from Elgin County in our newly merged United Way. So we're thrilled to have Mark's voice at our campaign cabinet, but we also have members from our board of directors, Kate Burns Gallagher, which would be a familiar name to you, who is the executive director of the Southwestern Ontario Wardens Caucus, and a number of others. We also have volunteers that are involved with selecting which agencies get funding. So you have local voices in all aspects of your United Way. We also have some future plans for, specifically for, so we recognize that we have more work to do when it comes to understanding Elmer better and understanding what the issues that are affecting your community on your streets every day. And so in the new year, we are going to embark on a process of community engagement and getting community leaders together to help identify what those issues are, and then targeting some specific financial investments to support local projects, initiatives, and community issues that you're seeing here. So, you know, I think we're, we're really open to digging in and, and really understanding your community better. Another way that we're supporting your local community that a lot of people don't really know about, and it's a bit of a, one of those hidden jewels, is two one one, and two one one is an information referral service. It operates 24/7 in multiple languages. So if people are looking for social service assistance or community connections, they can call that number from anywhere in the country, actually, and be able to be connected to live one-on-one support at any time. So if somebody's having a hard time paying their hydro bill, they can call two one one, and they'll connect them to a social service that can assist. If they're, you know, if their child is newly diagnosed with a learning disorder, how do you connect to those community resources in your region? So two and run is a really great asset. I can say from looking at the statistics on who's calling two and one from Elgin County right now, the number one issues, no surprise, housing, income support, mental health. That's what we're seeing. People are calling two and one from your region specifically. So as we think about this year and our future, I have, and Mark has, some specific asks for you. One is to help us spread the word about two and one. I think it's a really valuable asset. It can, you know, take a little bit of load off when you have constituents calling you, and you're, you're looking for what those resources are. You can connect them to two and one. Two, help us with that community engagement plan into the future when we come back in the new year and connect with you, you and local leaders, you know, help us make those connections so that we can increase our investment. And three, you know, we're, our, our engine is impact and having an impact in a community, and what does every engine need is fuel, and here is. And our fuel, United Way's fuel is financial investment and donations. And so Mark is doing a great job as our campaign chair, and I'm going to turn it over to him to talk about local organizations that are involved in our campaign and ways that everybody can join it.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone, and thanks for having us here today. So just start with the goal. The goal this year for United Way is seven million, and I think I've challenged the, the cabinet members that we need to surpass that goal. But we're doing everything, but we can't do it alone. That's why we've come here today to sort of, and Kelly has given you the, the good news, and now I'm going to tell you really some of those meats and potatoes of how we're going to get there, of how we plan on getting there. So we had a harvest launch yesterday in London, and we have another harvest launch tomorrow in St. Thomas, where we're going to have a similar event like we had in London. The numbers that we had in London was over twelve hundred folks that attended that harvest launch, and it was a huge success. Our total investment in the Elgin community, like Kelly has told you, is over 600,000. That's a combination of coming funds coming from United Way and also government funding. And we've also had a, a lot of folks rallying around, supporting the campaign this year. Well, one is EPCO. I mean, we have a United Way barbecue, community barbecue next Thursday, which you are all invited to, to attend. So I'm sure you probably had the word. If you have not, I can always send you the information, but it's next Thursday in our building there at thirty nine Big Street East, between twelve and two. So you are invited. Other organizations have been local schools in Elmer. They've actually rallied around in terms of helping with raising funds. The RBC are here in Elmer, the Police College, and, and the Knoll Frills. I mean, I'll tell you, Knoll Frills have been a huge supporter. We went to them last year for our first United Way campaign barbecue, and the, the manager there, the owner of that place, told us whatever we wanted, it was going to be on them. So they're a huge supporter of United Way, I think, in, in this community. All we needed to mention is we're having a United Way barbecue, and they say, yeah, whatever you need is on us. So again, like Kelly said, please help us to spread the word around and connect with, connect us with more people who can donate and be, help us to raise the funds that we need to support services within the Elgin and Middlesex community. Thank you.
And we're happy to answer any questions if anyone has.
Counsel. Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, your worship. To Kelly or Mark, I'm sure there are a lot of groups that are looking for support from the United Way, and as priorities change over, over time, you mentioned mental health support. How does the, the United Way shift their priorities within their budget to, to address those needs and wants?
Yeah, so two years ago, we moved to an open call for proposals. So agencies can apply for two years of funding, and then So, agencies can apply for two years of funding, and then in these two-year cycles, then we review the criteria and then go for another open call of proposals. So, many of you may be familiar with, long ago, we had the sort of the concept of member agencies, and it was sort of the same agencies that were getting funded year after... over a year, which has some benefits in terms of planning, but it doesn't allow us to be nimble as times change and as issues change. So, we found that this new process enables us to be really hyper-focused on what the needs of the day are. And so, in our last cycle, certainly poverty is a big focus, food security, housing supports, and getting people basic needs supports when they need them most. So, that was our focus. I suspect we're just about to announce our new criteria, but I can say, I mean, we all know that the communities and people in our communities are facing incredible pressures, inflationary pressures, and which is leading to increased need for mental health supports as well as continuation of those basic needs, housing and poverty-related support. So, we suspect that our criteria will be very similar in this round, but it also opens the door for more agencies around the region to apply for that funding. Yeah.
Anyone else? Counsel Van Rees.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. More of just a comment. I want to thank you both for coming out and doing this presentation to us and letting us know that coming into the new year, what you're looking at doing to help Elmer and surrounding areas, very much appreciated, and definitely commend the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Certainly, I would echo Counsel Van Rees's words, to thank you for providing the background for this year's drive and setting an ambitious goal of $7 million. So, we wish you all the best, and we will certainly spread the word. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That the delegation from the United Way Elgin Middlesex be received as information.
Moving second, Counselor Chapman and Counselor Van Rees. All those in favor, is carried. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item, which is 5.3, I think now, is a delegation from Mr. John Tishrobe, the owner of Tishrobe Exteriors, concerning development charges. Mr. Tishrobe, if you move up to the podium, please, and welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, councilmembers and Your Worship. My name is John Tygrobe. I live on...
Tygrobe.
Corners. I am the owner of Tygrobe Exteriors, Inc. My company is currently located at 90 Progress Drive in Elmer. I am a siding contractor, and I employ 19 individuals. I purchased 79B Street East from the town of Elmer just a short while ago and hoped to build a new shop on it in the future. Fast forward to today, I have broken ground at that 79B Street East. I plan to build a new shop to open up a new business that will sell exterior renovation building materials to the public and also to the local contractors. Because of the high cost of financing and timing and the unknown time at the town of Elmer to removing the development charge, the best logical option for me is to start this project right away. I have given the town of Elmer $96,000 in development fees. I do not agree with this development charge, as do many other businesses that I have spoken to over the last few weeks. I believe very strongly that this development charge should be repealed right away for the future and also for the growth of the town of Elmer. When I reviewed the schedule of development charges, I noticed a list of allocated funds, considering the high cost of property tax that is being paid from small businesses owner Progress Drive and also from Beach Street and from Chip Chase Court, should be well enough to cover these funds. I was advised from the town staff to write a letter of relief, and so doing, I am in high hopes that council will reconsider this fee and give me ideally a complete refund or reduce the fee to 50% as specified in the letter. Because of this added fee to the brand-new business I'm building, I have... Building has increased my risk significantly and will impact my capital to hire employees and just pay general expenses. So, again, I am asking for a break. Also, John Clausen from Doorway, from Doorway Canada in town, called me today and asked me about my project, and he mentioned to me that he was considering building an expansion shop at his current location. He mentioned to me, he mentioned to me, learning about the development fee in recent days, he will not move forward with this project. He also mentioned and complained that his property tax bill was $74,000 annually and that it is much too high. Again, this fee has a huge impact on small businesses that are wanting to invest in Elmer. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Tygrobe. Sorry for mispronouncing your name. A lot of people do that to mine, so I...
Tygrobe.
Counsel, any questions or comments from Mr. Tygrobe? Comments from staff? Very well.
If I may, I would just like to add one more thing. Because of that little cul-de-sac there, there's... Oh, now it was my turn of thought. How many years has that street been in there, the Beach Street Progress that's wrapping around there? Has it been like 25-plus years?
Yep, seems like that long. Anyone have an exact number of years? But it's been there for 20 years, I think, anyway.
So, if I have my math right, it's me, Dairy Queen, possibly the new home hardware that's building. I don't know if they had to pay the fee or not, but it's essentially the three of us that are paying this high cost in development charges, and the street being in there for so many years, it just makes sense to not have to pay it. I am a big believer in negotiating, and I'm willing to negotiate, but, yeah, I was just super disappointed that this happened, and it really set me back a lot. And so, I'm just a small guy, just trying to invest and to grow in the town of Elmer and move forward, so.
Well, thank you for those comments. Certainly, I understand what you're saying, and, you know, the town of Elmer for many years has been without development charges, but council a long time ago did bring them back in a, I guess, incremental way. So, we're looking at, you know, when you're talking about taxes in the town of Elmer, we're looking at reducing the taxes of, you know, the rest of the people in town as well with this. But, see, I understand your points, and certainly you are in discussions with staff right now, so council has heard your comments, and I think I have a question from Counselor Ozlach.
Yes, Your Worship. Can staff review the application?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, I drafted a report that's on the agenda as well to kind of explain it. Certainly, just to give a brief kind of background to council, the development charges are very regulated when you put them in place. The reason why the regulations were in place was because some municipalities a time ago started to do a race to the bottom. So, there was a race to the bottom to try to attract business on the backs of taxpayers, so that you would fund growth on the backs of taxpayers. And to avoid municipalities providing bonusing to specific businesses, there is kind of very rigid regulations around DCs. So, we went through the public process. There was a study done prior to the adoption of these in 2021. There's a statutory process that was changed, and during that process, if we had heard an argument like that we should have staggered if there's existing infrastructure, that could have been incorporated into that study and considered by this council. I think if there was some... Some large urban municipalities have done that. Most of the reductions are related to brownfield redevelopment, so that's when you've got an old industrial site that's real dirty and you want it done. So, I think when we're looking at greenfield ones, you probably would only see, you know, a 10% reduction, very small to what it was if we went through the study process, but still, that wasn't brought up during the public process, and we went through a very big study with Watson and Associates to do this. So, now that they're established, the only option for people to challenge them is if our calculation's wrong. That's the only thing that this council can actually consider, is if our calculation's wrong. Otherwise, what you're getting into is you have to treat every business in the same light. So, we would be in a position now where if you gave any exemption or reduction, every business that came forward in our new industrial park would have to get the same consideration. And because we don't have any mechanism to do that through the study process that was done, the public meetings that were held, that would have to be funded additionally throughout the tax levy. So, you would be transitioning that amount if you said, "Well, we're not going to charge $96,000. How about we charge a $30,000 reduction?" That amount would go on next year's taxation for the residents of Elmer directly as half a tax point to pay, and anybody else who got a permit would do that. So, you could initiate a process to undertake a new study, and we could go through that process, but we would be a year away from getting that done. And I think the expectation right now, the rates are at 75% of full industrial. My expectation is that would be the best that you would get, so my advice to people would be get your permits this year and start building before it goes to 100% next year. And then, every five years, we have to review this process as statutory required under the DC bylaws, so we can go through that. But the danger now is we can't just repeal that one section. The residential and the industrial are in the DC bylaw, so we have to open up the entire DC bylaw and do another study to look at that component of it. So, it isn't... There isn't an option outside of that process, and it's specifically made to be very challenging for people to come up after that public process. This is a way that the provincial government has done it. It's not us. It's a way that... So that councils, after they go through that public process, don't have to entertain these types of requests. There is no ability for complaint upon it when it's set, essentially. And that's a challenge, is that there is very... Council is in a position where you have really no options here that are good to address this issue without initiating a full study that would go well into 2024.
Counselor D'Strosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After reading this letter and this report, just for consideration for the applicant, I did look at comparative rates for other neighboring municipalities, and according to what I found, we're quite, like, we're quite reasonable compared to our neighboring municipalities. Would staff agree to that, or do you suggest that we're out of line? Like, from the research I found, we're very competitive.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and I believe so. The DCs are also calculated upon a projection of what our future costs will be for growth and growth in the industrial sector. So, one of the challenges, in addition to us being affordable, is we do have the new AIM Park that's going to come online. We do want to recover DCs for that, but because we didn't have DCs for this area before, we have to creatively fund the building of that park. We don't have those DCs currently that we could apply to the AIM Park because we didn't collect them before. So, it's to ensure that the next phase of our growth after this AIM Park, we do have funds available so that we don't have to continue to pay for the industrial or commercial expansion through taxpayers.
Deputy Mayor Barber, you had a question?
The last question answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. No other questions from the council? Thank you very much, Mr. Tygrobe.
Thanks for listening.
We have a resolution.
Would you like to receive them both in the same resolution?
Okay.
That the delegation from John Tygrobe, owner of Tygrobe Exteriors Elgin Incorporated, regarding development charges be received as information, and further that the report CAO 5523 respecting development charges be received as information.
Moving second, Counselor D'Strosier, Counselor Yarahy. All those in favor, is carried. Thank you. Item 6, Consent Agenda. Resolution.
That the September 20th, 2023 consent agenda be received for information, and that council approves the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on September the 6th, 2023.
Moving second, Counselor Van Rees, Counselor Ozlach. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, is carried. Thank you. Item 7 deals with the Finance Committee, so I call a recess while we work through the Finance Committee. First order of business, if the committee confirms the agenda for the meeting of September 20, I'll move in second, please. Counselor Chapman and Counselor Yarahy, all those in favor, motion is carried. And the next order of business, we are adopting the... And the next order of business, we are adopting the minutes of the August the night, 2023 meeting, noting no errors or omissions. Move by. Member Ozlatch, Member D'Rosie. Further discussion? Motion is carried. Report FIN 2323, respecting the 2024 budget survey, be received as information. Mover and seconder to receive the report, please. Member Cookett, Member Van Rais, and the report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the 2024 budget survey was highly successful. This year, we received 325 separate responses, which is the highest amount ever received by a significant margin. This is the third year since we initiated the survey and anecdotally, we're seeing that our efforts to have a transparent and open dialogue with the community are really starting to pay off. We release all the comments publicly and we can see that the tone and tenure, tenor of them are improving. So our first year, we had a lot of critical comments. 2021, it was still the pandemic though, so we were dealing with a bit more anger and it seems to, to have become switched to be more positive. Staff are hopeful that, you know, this is, is an indicator that Elmer, that residency Elmer is a terrific community to live in with a high level of services. We can't look at this survey though, without being kind of critical of ourselves. That's really the intention. Increased focus upon parks and recreation is required. This coincides with the, the last year's survey as well. And the town will be receiving the Parks and Recreation Master Plan later tonight. So we, we really do need to continue to keep the pressure on that and keep that as a top priority over the next year. Affordability is also a primary concern for residents. So we always need to be mindful that Elmer is a community where we have a lot of residents that are on fixed or, or low incomes. We're hopeful that as more growth comes online, the town will improve in terms of overall affordability, although our growth was very strong this year. There was a hiccup in the spring of 2023 for, for most municipalities where builders paused due to the uncertainty in interest rates hikes and the housing market. So that pause appears to be behind us now and staff are really working beyond our capacity right now to facilitate the amount of growth and inquiries that we're getting. Overall, this is a positive survey and it's the most positive survey results that we've seen today. Perceptions about the levels of our service have gone up noticeably and I think it shows that we're, we're hopefully trending in, in the positive direction, but we need to continue to keep up the emphasis on engagement and dialogue with the community. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Andy. Questions? Any comments? Yes?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It, it is nice to see more, more green, more good things going on. Some of the comments are, they don't beat around the bush, which is nice to, nice to see, but yeah, hopefully we can have some more positivity come back in the next.
From my perspective, I thought that the, the budget survey and the recreational plan pretty much went hand in, hand in step. The concerns were roadlined in the Recreation Master Plan, the shortcomings were all addressed in the, in the operating or in the, yeah, the comments to the operating budget. We've got some work to do. Some of the, the shortcomings that were mentioned are strictly on the dollars that we're able to collect through taxation and revenue sources. Thap Avenue, the, the one section, Elk, were repeatedly intermixed through the comments and the people want to see those things happen as well as other various projects around the town. But if we keep working away at them, eventually we'll get to them and it's all based on the, the outcome of the, the budget surveys and the, where we get to finally on the level of taxation. We heard the delegation tonight stressing the point that taxes are high. It's a double edged sword. Everybody's looking for the services, but we have to come up with the means to make that happen. And the only way we can do it is sue the budget.
Member Cookett.
Just a comment similar to the one you're making and, and to the one that Andy made concerning affordability and, and the, the nature of the populace that we have in the town of Elmer. We need to look at, and I think we are doing that, we need to look at the fact that affordability is not going to change unless we have growth in the town of Elmer and growth is going to, you know, add that, that tax income that we don't have if we do nothing. There are a number of people who want us to do nothing. If we do nothing, affordability is always going to be an issue. We need growth and growth costs money right now, but it's going to pay off in big dividends in the future.
Thank you. And are there any other comments?
We're dealing with the report 2323 regarding the survey. It's been moved and seconded. Without further ado, are there, we'll call the vote to, call the question to a vote. All those in favor? Okay, the motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on, report FIN 2223, respecting the preliminary 2024 operating budget received be received for information and that council acknowledged the proposed preliminary 2024 operating budget as presented and that council directs staff to present the final version of the 2024 operating budget for review and adoption at a future meeting. May I have a mover and a seconder, please? By Member Van Rais, seconded by Member Chapman. And the report, Heather? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So through you and to members of the committee, the preliminary budget you have in front of you tonight has a lot of assumptions in it. So I just want to be clear on that, but I wanted to make sure to give council a first look at the levy impact. The levy impact will be paid for, a large chunk that will be paid for by, by the growth we're seeing. I don't have the final impact data yet, but the forecasts are looking between five and $9 million worth of assessment growth for next year. So staff are hoping that this is a worst case scenario budget presented with the assumptions included. I've intentionally left the police service and ECC blank because I'd like the boards to have their first look at, at those budgets, but the numbers have been in here, I believe, worst case scenario. So overall, some pressures that we're talking about this year for tax levy increases are anticipation and reduction of provincial funding, which we're slowly, you know, it's, it's happening year over year. We're slowly, it's slowly degrading. Residual costs from inflation and rising interest rates, as Andy mentioned. Vendor cost increases due to labor and materials. All of our vendors are also giving their employees wages, their materials are going up. So that really is with respect to contracted services. Increases in insurance costs due to claims in 2023. There's an assumption in here between six and nine percent. I reached out to the insurance provider. They don't have those numbers yet. That'll be one of the last numbers that we get. Changes in statutory deductions such as the new CPP ceilings, EI and WSIB rates also. Assumptions are in here. So the starting point, I want to remind council, the starting point for 2024 was around five and a half percent. That's because you took $100,000 out of your contribution from reserves last year. That reverses and it goes back in as a positive. So your first, your first start is $100,000 if nothing changes. Then we add on there the changes in CPP calculation with the tier, the two tiers. We have an assumption here of $90,000 decrease in lump funding. I'm not sure what that will be yet. So hopefully, you know, that's the worst case scenario. We also have added the full time headcount to support the growth, which we flipped from a part time position to a full time position in administrative records. That position has helped tremendously with moving processes forward. Some of the business processes and initiatives that Owens Group and Josh's group have put in are, we're going to see gains in other areas for efficiencies, cervix call recovery. You know, Michelle and, and Owens Group has really done a lot for my team with, with respect to streamlining a lot of processes, which is just going to continue. So even though those costs are added to the operation budget, you may not see them right now as, you know, being something that's a benefit. The taxpayers are going to see that kind of stuff come through as a benefit to service requests if, if nothing else. She's also included, working with Elgin County on the GIS updates so that we can click on different drawings and get GIS or data through GIS that's integrated with Elgin County. So not only is she benefiting, you know, my team or, or other, other teams, it's, it's also benefiting planning and development and all that kind of stuff too. So we're able to respond to those calls quicker. So also adding the complement of Terry and the associate director role, that's related to specifically right now, infrastructure and development. Terry's streamlined a lot of, and, and team, Heather included, streamlined a lot of the contract documents, design guidelines, those types of things. So it's helping with our tendering process. So on the operations side, you're going to see an increase in, in salary with that, but on the capital side, when there's requests for quotes and those types of things that there's, it, it's very clear for the vendors what they're quoting, which will be reflective in their prices. So you'll see a savings eventually on the capital side, hard to quantify right now, but those savings will come out of reserves or those savings will stay in reserves for the, for the operations, high level points. The change in environmental services was including, so we included a waste disposal contract increase offset by the OREG 349-22, which establishes that municipalities will no longer operate the blue box programs. So overall, in that department, it'll be a cost savings of approximately $55,000 for the town. The new water rate debt has been included in here. It does not affect the tax levy since it's paid through the water rates. So even though there is a substantial debt repayment, the net impact is zero on the levy. An increase to hydro and costs in contracted services related to the lagoons in the sewer budget. We've added some optimization already in the lagoons. Rob's team has been busy doing that and I believe it's a pump or some sort of extra hydro costs from, from those optimizations that are driving those costs up. Again, that's a 0% impact on the levy. We sold the White Street property. So in here, we had rental income in prior years. We had to remove that, but the offsetting tax revenue from White Street flipping over to a taxpayer versus us being the taxpayer will offset for 2024. So as mentioned in the staff report, since inception, council's been focused on the council initiatives reserved to offset the levy. What we're trying to do is direct council to sponsor different departments for their initiatives. Instead of just throwing your $100,000 against the whole levy, we're saying, you know, if you want to do something in beautification and parks and you want to donate, you know, $10,000 to a program for one time in 2024, in 2025, the contribution will, will reduce. So your, your, and your expense will offset, so it'll be a net impact for 2025. Historically, we were just saying, you know, panicking, saying, oh my goodness, we, we need to reduce the levy, but we haven't been looking at specific items in the budget. I think we're at that point this year where we can do that kind of thing. So I gave the example of the beautification committee. We actually added $5,000 through review with Rob's team that historically, it looks like the Parks Department has been underfunded in that area, which may be a reason why we're having all these complaints and comments from the budget survey. So we added $5,000 in here. That may be something that council wants to sponsor next year out of their council initiatives reserve as an example. So protection services includes building 911 emergency management, bylaw, fire. Fire has the most substantial increase for 2024, being the $30,000 contribution to reserves for the communications equipment that was requested by Elgin County and the substantial cost of, of the ladder truck repair. In order to keep that truck per the chief operational, they need to do about a $10,000 major repair on that truck next year. That's also included in here. Council may want to consider things like, you know, avoiding the $30,000 contribution to reserve for the fire communications equipment and doubling up next year, kind of like we did with the elections reserve, but this, that hasn't been presented in this, in this number that you guys are looking at. Also, upon the finalization of the grants and donations review, the $55,000 cap will be applied. Currently, there's $60,000 in here, so $5,000 will come out once council decides which programs they want to sponsor. So we have everybody here except for the fire chief. So if there's anything, you know, we can answer. Rob's here, Josh is here, Owens here, Andy, myself. Right now, what we're waiting for in order to finalize this budget is obviously the CRA assumptions and the statutory deductions, WSIB rate being confirmed and the assessment from MPAC. It could possibly pay for two to three percent of this tax levy impact if we can get those assessments online and in the assessment rollbook before December or before the end of October. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions.
Thanks, Andy. Members of the committee, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, Heather, fantastic job on the report. I don't know if you did it all on your own, but it's very thorough.
Team effort.
Team effort. I have a question regarding the expenditure breakdown. I know it's, there's a pie chart that's on page 16 that kind of outlines the four major expenditures in categories. Wages and benefits, obviously understandable, same with contracted services and the transfers to reserves and debts, but the admin materials and supplies, I know it varies from department to department, but is there any way council could get a breakdown summary of what those are? Because if anyone from the public ever asked me specifically what those are for every department, I would, I wouldn't be able to answer them. I'd be like, I don't know. And I just find that a problem. So is there any way we could do something? I know minimal, but minimal though, I don't want to make you work too much, so.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Member D'Rosie. The detail of what is in materials and supplies, you'll find in the quarterly reports. So what I can do is I can explode that in the final budget document so you guys can have a list of all of the things that roll up there. But yeah, it's, it's exactly what it is, is, is what it says. It's basically nothing for contracted services, no transfers to debt, no, no wages and benefits. It's operating expenditures for tools, equipment, repairs and maintenance, all those things that roll up into, in an admin and supply on the P and L. So I can, I can blow that out in the, in the final budget document so you guys can have it.
I would really appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are we making adequate entries into reserves?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I hate this question. So when we presented the asset management plan, I was talking about a massive infrastructure debt and, you know, everybody's in the same boat. Currently, we are doing the bare minimum contribution to reserves. Asset management, we're, our requirement for the internal policy that council had created was 5% of the prior year levy. So I've kept with that. I haven't changed that because of the fact that we haven't had any growth, you know, all these pressures for all these taxpayers and, and nobody can frankly afford any more contributions to reserve. So at this point, we are doing the bare minimum. I would suggest when we do have a large chunk of growth that we, you know, maybe add a couple hundred thousand to that and slowly incrementally do that, but I, I want to wait to see what kind of growth we have before we do that because it's not going to help us just sitting in the bank when our taxpayers can't pay their tax bill. So to answer your question, no, we aren't, but we are doing the bare, we are at least doing the bare minimum, which is better than some people.
Member Ozlatch?
Mr. Chair, to Heather, is one tax point still 60,000?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's a, it's about 65,000 because we levied 6.5 million last year.
A couple of questions, if I may. You mentioned projected of five to nine million dollars in increased, increased assessment. How does that relate to dollars and cents?
So the problem is, is I'm generally talking overall, so different tax, like residential I pulled the MPAC data as of August 16th. So for a 10.8% levy impact, the equivalent would be around a 9.7% tax rate impact. So as the growth expands, the tax rate impact reduces because now we have more assessment to spread the levy over. So to answer your question, I can't tell you exactly right now because in the forecast, it doesn't give me all of those roll numbers with all of those MPAC codes on it. Have to wait until I get the rollbook in order to even get. I have to wait until I get the roll book in order to even give, you know, give that proper assessment, but it could be between like 2% and 3% depending on which which properties come online, like Anne Street needs to be assessed in this in this year. Brown Street needs to be, the assessment needs to be pulled through. So those ones are the new multi-res which are taxed at the residential tax rate. So that will help overall, but as far as the exact percentage of what that would equate to right now, I don't have that number because I need that MPAC assessment to understand which categories they're going to be applied to.
But growth is critical to sustaining.
Absolutely.
The budget.
Yep.
Chair, does MPAC have a deadline for providing this information?
So the cutoff, I'm going to MPAC next Wednesday to talk about the three properties that I just mentioned and other things that we need to close off, but we, the deadline for them to cut off and put through all of their substantiments for for the roll book to be assessed and for December 6th is October 30th. So we need to get all of those things, all of those permits closed, all those occupancies closed as fast as possible so that it can hit the roll book so that that's that's the amount we levy. We can't levy or we can't spread it out over anything that's not in that roll book.
Follow up. And if they miss any of our assessments that need to be on, we keep asking, is that what we do?
Yeah, so what happens is after they cut off, it'll be now a super omen for next year.
You had mentioned that WSIB, CPP, EI, and those kind of employee costs, they did spike a couple of years ago, and were you able to better project what the cost would be for 2023? Or are departments running over in those particular line entries?
No, we actually used inflation as the assumption for that. So we're and for some of them, I was able to true up right at year end before I cut the last budget. It's just this having pulling these files ahead to September so you guys can have your first look. I do have assumptions in there, but I can true those up before year end, before we cut the budget. So they should be pretty close.
Collective, they are significant numbers.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing that, we have a report. Without any other further questions, we'll call the questions to vote. All those in favor of the report? And the motion is carried. Thank you. And last order of business that we adjourn at 8:03 PM. Move by. Member DeRosie, and second is I, Member Duane. All those in favor? That always gets carried. Thank you.
So.
So the problem is, is I'm generally talking overall, so different tax, like residential I polled the MPAC data as of August 16th. So for a 10.8% levy impact, the equivalent would be around a 9.7% tax rate impact. So as the growth expands, the tax rate impact reduces because now we have more assessment to spread the levy over. So to answer your question, I can't tell you exactly right now because in the forecast, it doesn't give me all of those roll numbers with all of those MPAC codes on it. I have to wait until I get the roll book in order to even give, you know, give that proper assessment, but it could be between like 2% and 3% depending on which which properties come online, like Anne Street needs to be assessed in this in this year. Brown Street needs to be, the assessment needs to be pulled through. So those ones are the new multi-res which are taxed at the residential tax rate. So that will help overall, but as far as the exact percentage of what that would equate to right now, I don't have that number because I need that MPAC assessment to understand which categories they're going to be applied to.
But growth is critical to sustaining.
Absolutely.
The budget.
Yep.
Chair, does MPAC have a deadline for providing this information?
So the cutoff, I'm going to MPAC next Wednesday to talk about the three properties that I just mentioned and other things that we need to close off, but we, the deadline for them to cut off and put through all of their substantiments for for the roll book to be assessed and for December 6th is October 30th. So we need to get all of those things, all of those permits closed, all those occupancies closed as fast as possible so that it can hit the roll book so that that's that's the amount we levy. We can't levy or we can't spread it out over anything that's not in that roll book.
Follow up. And if they miss any of our assessments that need to be on, we keep asking, is that what we do?
Yeah, so what happens is after they cut off, it'll be now a super omen for next year.
You had mentioned that WSIB, CPP, EI, and those kind of employee costs, they did spike a couple of years ago, and were you able to better project what the cost would be for 2023? Or are departments running over in those particular line entries?
No, we actually used inflation as the assumption for that. So we're and for some of them, I was able to true up right at year end before I cut the last budget. It's just this having pulling these files ahead to September so you guys can have your first look. I do have assumptions in there, but I can true those up before year end, before we cut the budget. So they should be pretty close.
Collective, they are significant numbers.
Yeah. Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing that, we have a report. Without any other further questions, we'll call the questions to vote. All those in favor of the report? And the motion is carried. Thank you. And last order of business that we adjourn at 8:03 PM. Move by. Member DeRosie, and second is I, Member Duane. All those in favor? That always gets carried. Thank you.
So.
It's also important to note that developments requiring site plan approval will still include, but not limited to, industrial, commercial, institutional, medium, and high-density residential development for new expansions, conversions, and redevelopment. And within my report, I give some examples of developments that would undergo a site plan review process, including, but not limited to, new commercial and industrial development expansions of an existing school are some examples. Town staff have reviewed the proposed bylaw and comments have been incorporated into the proposed bylaw for council's consideration. Moving on to the planning policy review, section forty-one of the Planning Act states that council made by bylaw designate the whole are part of any such areas of site plan control area, provided the official plan policies are in the municipality's plan and describes the proposed site plan control area. Moving on to the county's official plan, it specifically states in the county's plan, it encourages site plan control provisions of the Planning Act and encourages councils to implement these policies and provisions in local plans and to coordinate and enhance the physical development of the municipality. Moving on to the town's official plan, we do in fact have the required policies within our official plan in order for us to be able to enact site plan control and in order to designate areas for site plan control areas. And in particular, that is found in section six point seven, site plan control. In terms of financial impact, it's important to note, site plan review is an applicant-based process and administration's time is considered through the collection of fees in accordance with the town's user fee bylaw as amended from time to time. In terms of strategic priorities, this report focuses on pillar two, planning for the future, and pillar three, economic vitality. In conclusion, the new site plan control bylaw contains up-to-date provisions. It clearly defines the type of development that are exempt from site plan control, as well as grants exceptions to minor additions to existing site plan approved properties and contains more detailed provisions for the execution of the agreement. Planning staff advise that the bylaw is in compliance with the Planning Act and conforms to the policies of the county's official plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Questions, comments from council? Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, worship. To Heather, are there any provisions within the new site plan control bylaw that adhere to provincial policy statements or the Planning Act that are concerning to the municipality?
It's important to note that in the provincial, the provincial policy statement does not make mention to site plan control. It's referenced within, as I mentioned, within section forty-one of the Planning Act, and that's where it gives council the authority to pass a bylaw for site plan control, which is the current bylaw we have in effect. Okay, so we've already enacted that, and the Planning Act just specifies that we can pass a bylaw, we can designate whole or part of the municipality's site plan control area, and specifies what we can request under the site plan control agreement. And that you'll find under section five, requirements for site plan approval, that's been taken directly from section forty-one of the Planning Act.
Follow-up. Were there any specific relaxations in expectations on site, site plan control to adhere to the Planning Act?
In terms of relaxations, one thing I did notice from what has changed legislatively is that applicants are no longer required to show the exteriors of buildings. So like the building materials on the exteriors, they're no longer required to show that. So that has been relaxed, as well as not requiring site plan control for residential developments under ten units. As well as landscape plans. It's no longer a mandatory requirement. I will say I'm still seeing many developers submitting those plans because it just completes the project and it kind of gives more information to staff as well as to council and the public about the development.
Can we ask for them and not demand them?
We can ask, but if we get a pushback, they do not legally have to provide. I haven't had anyone not provide this year so far.
Anyone else? Very well, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor. It's carried. Thank you. Chief Administrative Officer, finally, Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Have a motion?
That report C A O fifty-six, twenty-three, respecting the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, be received as information and that council adopt the amended Parks and Recreation Master Plan with the additional input received from the community and further that the council direct staff to provide an update upon the master plan following the recruitment of the Parks and Recreation Manager position in two thousand and twenty-three.
Moving to secondor, Councilor Chapman, Councilor Van Rais. And Andy, your report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would like to thank the public for the input on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This exercise has been a very informative one. We're now looking forward to adopting the Parks, the plan, and then following this, initiating the recruitment for the vacant Parks and Manager role. And then following that, we want to begin routine updates and bringing plans forward for council's review as we progress with the, through the detailed recommendations. I, for one, am very excited to see this plan proceed. Our budget survey really shows that this is a top priority for the town and where we need to really focus upon developing plans and proposals for council and for the public to comment upon. So there's a lot of work ahead of us. This is the first step in a long journey, but I'm very glad that we that I'll try my best to answer any questions council might have.
Counsel. Counselor Dzrosie.
Thank you, your worship. To Andy, why is the input of the Recreation Manager being prioritized?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The input of the Recreation Manager isn't being prioritized. We don't have a current expert on staff with a background and expertise in implementing a plan. This involved sixty, sixty-some-odd recommendations. We need, we need somebody on this full-time.
May I follow up?
Sure.
So staff are unable to prepare a report outlining the short-term priorities and the projected costs?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We are short a key position in our organization. We are fully focused on growth and development. We're, staff are already stretched very thin trying to keep current day-to-day operations of the facility going. So we do need to upstaff before we start initiating strategic initiatives and priorities.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor. It's carried. Thank you. Seven point four, Director of Corporate Services, Municipal Integrity Commissioner.
That report Clerk fifty-two-three entitled Municipal Integrity Commissioner Contract Award be received for information and that council authorizes staff to enter into an agreement with Robert J. Sways for the provision of integrity commissioner services for a period of two years, it being noted that the final agreement shall be approved by bylaw at a future meeting of council.
Moving to secondor, Council of Van Rais and Councilor Chapman. Questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor. It's carried. Thank you. Item eight, new business and matters of urgency. Readings of bylaws and proceedings. They're on point nine. Before I ask Josh to read the lengthy list of bylaws, I would like to pull bylaw nine point three, point three, dealing with remuneration for council. So do you have a resolution concerning the others? Excuse me.
That council approves and gives three readings to the bylaw fifty-seven, twenty-three, being a bylaw to designate the town of Elmer as a site plan and control area pursuant to section forty-one of the Planning Act nineteen-ninety as amended. Bylaw fifty-eight, twenty-three, being a bylaw to amend the bylaw number fifty-seven, ninety-nine, being a zoning bylaw of the town of Elmer. Bylaw sixty, twenty-three, being a bylaw to control noise within the town of Elmer, and bylaw sixty-one, twenty-three, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular council meeting held on September the sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Moving to secondor for those bylaws, Councilor Ozlatch, Councilor Chapman. Any discussion on any of those? Questions? Seeing none. All those in favor. It's carried. So I'd return now to bylaw nine point three, point three. What's the resolution?
That council gives three readings and approves the bylaw fifty-nine, twenty-three, being a bylaw to establish the remuneration for the mayor, deputy mayor, and members of council effective January the first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Moving to secondor, Council, Deputy Mayor Barber and Councilor Ozlatch. You have any questions or comments from council? Counselor Dzrosie.
Thank you, your worship. I have a concern with the method in which was this matter is presented. I understand staff have drafted a memo in light of this concern, and I would like to request that they present that memo and post it retroactively for public consideration and transparency.
I think this, you've got it on?
Give you a second to read then. Okay. Are there any other comments, questions from council? I would like to make a comment on this. I guess there's, there's never a good time for council to ask for a raise, I guess, so to speak. Perhaps there's a better way than having council make the decisions on their own remuneration, but time has shown that nothing else seems to work except the process that we're going through now. Other local municipalities have, have appointed citizen groups to recommend councilors, and it turns out in, in, I think, all of them that they eventually went to a consultant to, to get a report in terms of what the remuneration should be. We decided not to do that. We decided that would be too costly. So an in-house analysis, as explained by this memo, was what we decided to do. And Elmer council for a long time has denied itself rigorous increases. Indeed, there was a long period of time when there were no increases at all. That's why we find ourselves in a situation where we're really at the bottom in terms of council remuneration in the area and compared to municipalities of our size. I feel that the increases recommended for councilors and deputy mayor are quite fair and bring them at par with similar jurisdictions. I do feel, however, that the suggested remuneration for the mayor is too much. It's too inflationary. I can understand that that number appeared because they picked the median number of some of the smaller municipalities in the province and looked, but I would, I'd be quite, I'd be quite, I think, fair to, to bringing the remuneration for the mayor in line with other local mayors in this area. So therefore, I'm asking for a, a amendment to the motion that would reduce the mayor's salary by five hundred dollars a month. And I would put forward that as an amendment. So I guess I'm asking for a secondor for that. Councilor Ozlatch, thank you. Is there further discussion? Councilor Rahi.
Is there a better way, through you, Mr. Mayor, is there a better way to bring it in instead of doing it all in one, like just in one shot? It is important, I think, to keep up with it, especially seeing the way the election went, and there wasn't a whole lot of people's names getting thrown in. So I do think it is important, but is there, instead of just having it as a one-year, like, could we split it up over a couple of years or do we just?
I think we did look at that, and I think part of the reasons that we're saying, let's do, you know, we'll start right in January of twenty-twenty-four, because if you spread it over three years, what happens is that we actually get further behind all the time. Right now, with what we're doing, it becomes an automatic kind of increment for everybody concerned, both staff and, and, and council. And that way, we, we avoid the pitfall of a falling far behind or not being, you know, falling far behind, not being part of the, the kind of mainstream fifty percent tile. So I think it's just fine to start at all at once. Okay. I do, I do apologize to forthcoming mayors if this happens because it reduces the mayor's salary considerably. Councilor Van Rais.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick comments. One, I'm glad we didn't use a consultant because I remember the comments at the meet the candidates night about using consultants and paying too much. And second, I again, yeah, it is kind of awkward to be sitting here and voting on what's going to be an increase for us, but hopefully that does encourage some people at the future election to put their name out. So we don't have five acclaimed members and we actually have the public voting on who's going to sit here.
Thank you for that comment. Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, worship. Members of council historically have been very reluctant or hesitant to even talk about the subject, let alone do something. And what I like most about this is that the whole process will be taken over by others in, in future years. And yes, council has to vote on it to accept it, but the, the logistics of how it got there is, is now at another level.
Okay. Seeing no other comment, do you have a motion on the floor for bylaw fifty-nine, twenty-three? All those in favor? Do you want to reread the motion with the amendment?
Sorry, yeah, if I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just a matter of procedure. So we do have a, an amendment to the main motion. And Councilor Ozlatch, the amendment to that motion, which involves reducing the mayor's monthly remuneration by five hundred dollars. So we'll vote on that, on that amendment to the main motion first. So this is moved by yourself, Mr. Mayor, and seconded by Councilor Ozlatch, and that's the amendment to the main motion.
So we're voting on the amendment only at this point. All those in favor of the amendment? That's carried, and then the main, the motion is amended.
Yep. So the main motion as amended is moved by Deputy Mayor Barber, seconded by Councilor Ozlatch, and that's that council gives three readings to and approves the bylaw fifty-nine, twenty-three, as amended, to establish remuneration for the mayor, deputy mayor, and members of town council effective January the first, two thousand and twenty-four.
I need a mover and secondor for that? I don't think so, no. So, all right. Any further discussion on this? Seeing done. All those in favor? Opposed? There's two opposed, and that is carried. Thank you. Very well, and next item, inquiries by members. Any inquiries? Councilor Ozlatch.
Your worship, to, to the clerk, how's a downtown demolition occurring?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to member Ozlatch. We've got some good news in that respect. We do have confirmation from the, the insurer representing this, the site of the accident that they have received confirmation from the adjacent building owners, engineering representatives, that we are, and they are set to, to commence the demolition. So as it stands right now, staff communicated today with the, with the contractor and the different parties that are responsible for that demolition. I'm just advising them of some important information, such as, you know, the truck routes for transporting materials outside of the town. You know, recommending that the workers avoid parking in prime parking spaces so as to not adversely impact our local businesses any further than they've already been impacted. And further on, just looking for a, you know, a project contact and a timeline as to when it will begin. We've heard tentatively that it could start as soon as Monday on September the twenty-fifth, but we're still seeking that confirmation. And the town intends to keep the public updated on the process as we understand that, you know, it could, it could be somewhat of an inconvenience. We're hoping that it's quick and without any, any unforeseen circumstances, but ultimately we're prioritizing the, the safety of, of that process. So again, to answer your question, we're hoping that it starts on Monday, but it could be slightly later, but everything that needs to be completed for it to begin has been completed.
Any others? Statements and committee reports? Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, worship. A couple of things. Couple of Saturdays ago, I had an opportunity to represent Elmer at the Elgin County Plowing Match in Rodney. First time I had ever driven a tractor with a plow. Some of the other participants from other municipalities thought I intentionally went crooked to make it harder for them, but I, I'll take the fifth on that. Important thing is, nobody got hurt. Secondly, last, last week, the majority of council were at the, the fire hall for a presentation by EPCOR on a donation of combination smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, which will enhance the Elmer Fire Department's response to input from the community looking for assistance in smoke alarms. And it'll actually take the, those products, excuse me, directly to the people, which is a, a good plus for, for Elmer and the area. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Anyone else? Councilor Ozlatch.
Yes, your worship. I attended the, the fire hall with the same time as Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Barber. And I also attend the last Saturday for the fiftieth anniversary for the Hort Society in Bear Park. So.
The fiftieth anniversary of the Hort Society?
Horticulture Society.
I thought you said Hort Society, but I was there, I was there too.
It's a short form.
Hort.
I always talk like that. Horticulture Society of Elmer.
Yeah, and certainly, as I said at the time, the Horticulture Society has done the town of Elmer proud, looking after a number of, you know, beautiful places around the town. So thank you. Anyone else? Report of the mayor. Cut mine short. I think all I'm going to report on is that Pete and I are going to be putting ourselves out before the public on September the twenty-fifth. So all of you that are still watching out there at the town hall on September the twenty-fifth at six-thirty, come and give us your opinions. Recommend. at 6:30, come and give us your opinions and recommendations, and kudos on the 25th. Starts at 6:30. Thank you. And next item, notice of motion. Are there any notices of motion? Counselor Disrozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Be patient because it's my first notice of motion, so it's long, so.
Well, you're only allowed to read it.
Yep, just going to read it. Yep. Whereas the southeast portion of the town of Elmer, specifically neighborhood roads south of Elk Street and east of John Street South are having an issue with pedestrian safety and infrastructure. And whereas residents within this district looking to commute, walk, bike, et cetera, to either downtown, a school, the closest park, which is Lions Park, or patron local shops must cross John Street South, County of Elgin Road. And whereas the only PXO on John Street South does not adequately service residential neighborhoods south of Elk Street. And whereas there are additional plans for extensive residential development south of Elk Street. Now therefore being resolved that staff be directed to prepare a background report for council's consideration on the feasibility of an additional PXO on John Street South and Alexander Drive.
Very good. Thank you. So that motion will come, come up in next council meeting. Next item, meeting close to the public. We have a resolution.
That council moves into a meeting close to the public at 8:42 PM. To discuss the problem of matters. Item 14.1, and this is the Chief Administrative Officer Report, CAO 5823, and that's a, an industrial land update. In consideration of that item's close to the public pursuant to section 239 to C of the Municipal Act as amended, as the subject matter pertains to a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Item 14.2, Director of Corporate Services Clerk and Manager of Planning and Development, Report, Clerk 4923, and this is respecting disposition of municipally-owned lands progress drive north. In consideration of this item being close to the public as pursuant to section 239 to C of the Municipal Act 2001, as amended, as the subject matter pertains to a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. We've got item 14.3, and that's a report from the Chief Administrative Officer Report, CAO 5923, and that's respecting contractual matters, labor relations, in consideration of that item's close to the public pursuant to section 239 to D and K of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended, as the subject matter pertains to labor relations or employee negotiations in a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on, on or, on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. And finally, item 14.4, and that's a report from the Chief Administrative Officer Report, CAO 6023, respecting mediation at the East Elgin Community Complex, their agreement. In consideration of that item, is close to the public pursuant to section 239 to E and K of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended, as the subject matter pertains to litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Thank you. Move or a second. Counselor Van Rys, Counselor Chapman. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. There be a brief recess before we move into close.
Right down everyone. We're on. So we have a motion.
That council rises from the meeting closed to the public at 9:36 PM and reports the following. That council gave advice to the chief administrative officer respecting report CAO 5923 contractual matters, labor relations. Council gave advice to the CAO regarding report 6023 regarding mediation ECC agreement. Council gave direction of the CAO regarding report CAO 5823 regarding industrial land update. And finally that council gave direction to the CAO and the director of corporate services clerk regarding report clerk 4923 disposition of municipally owned lands progress drive north.
Thank you. Moving to seconders, councillor Chapman and councillor Ozlatch. All those in favor, as Kerry, thank you, have resolution to adjourn.
That council do now adjourn at 9:36 PM.
Moving to seconders, deputy mayor Barbara and councillor Disrosi. All those in favor?